Town Council, a special meeting for March 19th, 2020 to order. And I'd like to turn the meeting over to Attorney Luzzi for some advice.
My name is Michael Luzzi and I am the town attorney. As indicated in the notice and agenda for this meeting, there is no in-person public access and no public comment. A dial-in conference number was provided for interested persons to listen only. For those listening, I would ask that you mute your phones if you are able to do so, so that we do not get any background noise. I have one very important reminder. Every time someone speaks, councilperson, a professional here to speak to the council, you must state your name and title for the record. You must be careful not to speak over one another, so that members of the public who are listening can hear what is being said and that we have a clear record. We have a number of council members participating by phone. After each agenda item is presented and before action is taken, the clerk will do a roll call, so that each council member has the opportunity to make any comments or ask any questions that they wish. I am now going to turn the meeting over to Chairman Joseph Deco, who will ask the clerk for a roll call. For those participating via phone, please indicate so when the roll call is taken and your name is called.
Thank you, Attorney Luzzi again. This is Chairman Joe Deco. Roberta, may I have a roll call, please?
Ashley Lesko?
Here.
Beth Capitorto?
Here, participating by phone.
Kimberly Glassman?
Here, participating by phone.
Joseph Deco?
Present.
Salvatore Montez? Joseph Santino?
Hi, joined.
Josh Walter?
Here.
Mary Ann Caesar?
Here.
Louis Pacelli?
Present.
Linda Hennessy? Samantha Parlato?
Present.
Robert Ranphone?
Here.
Henry Butler?
Henry Butler, participating by phone.
Raymond Fontano?
Here.
Jennifer Ruggiero?
Here.
Hang on, I have one question. Attorney Michael Luzzi, could you recall Mr. Ranphone, please, on 23rd?
Robert Ranphone?
Here.
12th present, you have a corner.
Thank you, Roberta. Just wanted, before we get started, I just want to read something into the record. To the residents and taxpayers of the Town of East Haven and other interested parties, due to Governor Ned Lamont's March 10th, 2020 declaration of a public health emergency and civil preparedness emergency, and subsequently issued executive orders, and Mayor Joseph A. Carfora's March 16th, 2020 declaration of a state of emergency in the Town of East Haven due to the spread of coronavirus disease 2019 in the state of Connecticut, including New Haven County, in-person public access to this meeting will not be permitted. The public can listen to the meeting by calling the following telephone number from a landline or cellular phone, the area code 717-275-8940, and entering the following access code, 761-2817. A video recording of the meeting will also be made available following the meeting through the Town of East Haven's website Please note again that there is no public comment permitted. The Town Council will hold a special meeting on Thursday, March 19th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at East Haven High School Library at 35 Wheelbarrow Lane.
Item number two. Vice Chairman Lou Pacelli, to consider an act upon a resolution pursuant to Section 6 Emergency Appropriations of Chapter 7 of the Town Charter, whether to waive a public hearing and notice of such hearing for an emergency appropriation for the total amount of which, per said charter provision, shall not exceed 1% of the current tax levy in any one fiscal year, to mitigate the effects of the public health emergency posed by the spread of coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19.
This is Chairman Joe Deco. At this time, I'd like to call Attorney Luzzi to speak on this.
With respect to this item, Michael Luzzi, town attorney. With respect to this item, we are asking for the waiver of a public hearing, as certainly all councilmembers know, and I'm quite sure members of the public. Something like this would require a public hearing, which would require advertising in certain periods of time and deadlines. Given the circumstances, we really cannot afford those deadlines. The numbers with respect to this virus are rising. I think that both chiefs will speak to the fact of the public safety concerns, and I'm quite sure that most of you are aware of them. So I am recommending the waiver of the public hearing.
Thank you, Attorney Luzzi. This time, I'm asking for a motion, so moved, from Vice Chairman Pacelli, second.
Vice Chairman Pacelli.
Second.
Second, from Councilwoman Caesar. Brought on. Any discussion on this from the council?
When I order, I thought we were going to roll call the questions. Your question says roll call was made.
I think, and this is Attorney Michael Luzzi. I think because we do have councilpersons participating remotely, that we need to do a roll call to see if they have any questions or prospective discussions. So I do want to order, I'll take it.
Okay.
Ashley Lesko, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Beth Capitorto, any questions?
No questions.
Kimberly Glassman, any questions?
No questions.
Joseph Deco?
No.
Josh Walter, any questions?
I already know the answer, but this is for Attorney Luzzi, just to make clear for the record. We do have the authority to suspend, as you requested, as per Town Charter. That is correct, is it not?
That's right.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mary Ann Caesar, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Louis Pacelli, any questions?
No questions.
Samantha Parlato, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Robert Ranphone, any questions?
No questions.
Henry Butler, any questions?
No questions at this time.
Raymond Fontano, any questions?
No.
Jennifer Ruggiero, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Roberta for a roll call vote, please.
Ashley Lesko?
Yes.
Beth Capitorto?
Here.
Kimberly Glassman?
Here.
Joseph Deco?
Yes.
Josh Walter?
Yes.
Mary Ann Caesar?
Yes.
Louis Pacelli?
Yes.
Samantha Parlato?
Yes.
Robert Ranphone?
Yes.
Henry Butler?
Here.
Raymond Fontano?
Yes.
Jennifer Ruggiero?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item number three, please.
Vice Chairman Lou Pacelli, to consider an act upon a resolution pursuant to Section 6 Emergency Appropriations of Chapter 7 of the Town Charter, to approve an emergency appropriation, the total amount of which, per said charter provision, shall not exceed 1% of the current tax levy in any one fiscal year, to mitigate the effects of the public health emergency posed by the spread of coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19.
Thank you. This is Chairman Joe Deco. At this time, I'd like to recognize Police Chief Ed Lennon, Fire Chief Matt Markorelli, and the Director of Finance, Jim Keely. How about you speak first?
Jim Keely, Director of Finance, Town of East Haven. With regards to the tax levy, levy is the tax imposed on property owners based on the value of the property and the municipal government's needs. Basically, what this means is it's the tax assessment multiplied by the mill rate. Our current tax levy is $63,222,992, which would be available for emergency appropriations to be $634,222. I'd like to add that if this is approved, we have set up an account. It has not been used yet. All purchase orders and all processing will come through the finance department. In best practices, this will be filed and be shared when it is used appropriately. I guess now I'll turn it over to Chief Markorelli?
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Jim.
Matthew Markorelli, Fire Chief. Good evening, everybody. I'm here, unfortunately, to request for you an emergency appropriation not to exceed, at this time, $150,000. You're all aware of some difficult times that this country and our town is facing. And we are in desperate need of protective equipment and other supplies to allow us to prepare and manage this COVID-19 event. We're in daily meetings. Information is coming in by the hour and ever-changing. And the last meeting that we had today was giving us very concerning information, but basically telling us that we're on our own. So we were informed that of 34,000 masks that are being sent by the federal government. We're only going to be receiving none of those. Of the 144,000 masks that are in the state's strategic stronghold, we are getting 220 coming to the Town of East Haven. It's our prediction, based on our current activity level and the prediction on illness in the general population throughout the world, that we're going to see as many as 2,500 people seek services from the fire department, and probably many more than that through the police department. So we need adequate protective clothing to protect our responders, because they too will be getting sick. And it's forced us to look at the way we're doing business, altering work hours, extending work hours, modifying schedules, changing locations for work, having people work from home in support roles. And much of this, most importantly, the equipment that we're requiring, is causing us to source it anywhere we can get it throughout the country. So I'm asking for these funds as seed money, and I'm giving that to you with the caveat that we will likely be back here again. Fortunately, since the presidential declaration was made under the Stafford Act, we are entitled to seek reimbursement for up to 75% of allowable expenses. So of course, some will not be reimbursed, but those are vetted expenses, and we acquire things off a source list that allows them to be more readily reimbursable. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Chairman, if you know. Had joined.
Or turn it over to Chief Lennon if he has any additional information to add.
Thank you. Chief Lennon?
Chief Edward Lennon, Police Chief. I don't really have that much more to add to Chief Markorelli other than emphasizing, after all the meetings we attend, literally, like Chief Markorelli says, literally changes by the hour, is that as a town, as a community, we are literally on our own. And being able to get the personal protective equipment that we need and supplies that we need to be able to effectively respond to this crisis is of dire needs to us. We've done our best to prepare, however, it literally changes by the day, and it could change things tomorrow.
I'd be happy to answer. This is Chief Markorelli. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Yes?
Hold on, before we move into the discussion roll call, I just want to, this is Chairman Joe Deco. I just want to correct a technicality issue. And Roberta, I would ask you to amend the roll call to show that Councilman Santino is in fact on the phone. He had a, there was a little difficulty, but Councilman Santino, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we have you. Thank you very much. Okay, so Roberta, if you can just amend that. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like a motion. Okay, a roll call for any questions from the council.
Ashley Lesko, any questions?
No questions.
Beth Capitorto, any questions?
No questions.
Kimberly Glassman, any questions?
No questions.
Joseph Deco, any questions?
No.
Joseph Santino, any questions?
No.
Josh Walter, any questions?
Chiefs, I want to thank you both for you and your departments, the very important work that you're doing. I am a retired military man. I have nothing but respect for you and I'm gratitude. What is your situation right now with PPE? That's my first question.
I would say that we're in a lot better shape than the local communities, but based upon our current call volume, the amount of calls that people are seeing in the surrounding communities, we think we have about one to two weeks' worth of supplies. But of course, it depends on the call volume.
What is, do you have any lines on replenishment?
This is Chief Markorelli responding. We are sourcing it from wherever we can get it. We have some items that are on back order. The most difficult equipment that we're getting is, that we're trying to get our N95 respirators. We did, we are receiving 220 of those from the state of Connecticut that are expired. We had to sign a release that we would make sure our employees know that. But at this point, we're willing to take whatever we can get. I will say, we're in much better shape than a lot of the other communities. We have about 1,500 respirators on hand, but we're getting mixed information from the CDC on whether or not they're reusable. And we're actually not trusting the information that we're getting at this point. The last data, the last information bulletin that we received from the CDC said that we can also use handkerchiefs.
The Councilman Walter, other than, so your son at PPE has a personal protective equipment. Other than the masks, what about face shields, covers? I know the police, armed fire department, wear uniforms. Is there anything to protect responding to calls other than the face mask? Or is that it?
Chief Markorelli responding to Councilman Walter. We have a limited supply of coveralls of different types. Some are residential painting coveralls. Others are Tyvek suits, which are approved for that use. We actually are also looking at rain slickers, because at least they'll be deconable and reusable as a last-ditch effort. We've been sourcing this equipment anywhere we can get it. Everybody's in the same boat. We had a little bit more forethought and started about three or four weeks before anybody else was paying attention. So we're actually a little ahead of the game. The other stuff that we're sourcing besides personal protective equipment is disinfectant, bleach. We are in the same toilet paper crisis that everybody else seems to be around here. So we're sourcing that, because our personnel are living in the fire station or the police station 24/7, and they have personal needs just like everybody else. We're probably going to be replacing all personnel's uniforms. They're not allowed to wear uniforms to and from work any longer. The crews are laundering the opposite crew's uniforms, so they're not bringing disease home with them. It's really changed the whole model of how we're operating. So it's required us to think pretty deeply on how we do things.
Thank you. One last question. This is a fluid situation. Is there a hope that you will get some relief from the state or even the federal government directly? Or is this, we're on our own against Councilman Walter? We're on our own until we don't know when?
Chief Markorelli answering Councilman Walter's question. And to your point, the last information that we received from the Strategic National Stockpile, the state of Connecticut requested 500,000 N95 masks. The state of Connecticut is getting 34,000 of those. And we were told today that public safety is receiving none of that allotment. The state of Connecticut has 144,000 masks in its own strategic stockpile. We were told that they are all expired by at least 10 years. They were sent for destructive testing to see if that allotment was okay. They're sent back. They're saying they're only good for 85% as opposed to 95% filtration. So we are taking what they're going to give us out of that 144,000 masks that are available to the state. Our jurisdiction was only allotted 220. So we're assuming that the bulk of those are going to be going to hospitals, even though they were allotted for public safety during the fear of H1N1 and smallpox pandemic many years ago when we were preparing the pandemic plan. So to answer your question briefly, we are on our own. So I'm asking for help.
On the submarine, I was a gas-free engineer. One of my jobs was to extend certifications on PPE equipment. And I went to war, and never did I have to extend a certification on a piece of gear that was 10 years past its expiration date. Thank you so much, and God bless the loyalty and dedication of your departments and the people listening. I mean that. Thank you.
Mary Ann Caesar, any questions?
Yeah, Chief Markorelli, you were just talking about the masks that are expired. Is there anything that we can do to put over that expired? I don't really know too much about them. If we're in a pinch, is that possible?
So the CDC is offering recommendations on...
Excuse me, excuse me. This is Attorney Michael Luzzi. Someone, please mute your phones if we're hearing background noise. Not so pleasant background noise. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
The masks are actually designed to be one-time use. They're rationing them currently at the hospitals, the local hospitals that service New Haven County. We will likely be rationing them. Yale, New Haven Hospital, is working on a plan to sterilize the masks, to kill the virus on them. So we have established two, three strongholds, one in each fire station, to corral the masks until such time that Yale can perfect their decontamination process and then reuse them in the event that the country's efforts to beef up production of those masks falls through. But you know, they'll have pathogen on them, and anything that we use to cover the mask would have pathogen on it. So it's not something that we would prefer to do.
Chief Lennon, the shields. Councilwoman Caesar addressing Chief Lennon. The shields, do all the police officers, when they go on their shift, have one?
Edward Lennon, Police Chief, responding to the question. The officers have personal protective equipment, which includes eye protection, the respirators, gloves. And we do have a small cache of the suits that Chief Markorelli spoke about. In regards to the full shield, we just took delivery today of 12 of them. That's our first 12 that we actually were able to get ahold of. I can't echo so much as what Chief Markorelli had already told, is that we literally had to chase down just to get three dozen of them. And that's the share between the police and the fire department.
And Councilwoman Caesar, how many policemen are on duty at one time?
It depends on what time of day the shift is.
So is it guaranteed that everyone's going to have protection?
At this current juncture, yes. But the same thing, once they are exposed, they have to be decontaminated.
How do they do that?
There's several different ways. If Yale can, if they can perfect that way of doing it, it's probably the best. However, worst-case scenario, we would have to use some type of bleach mixture. Or prior to your meeting today, when they were spraying down the tables, we actually do that with all our police cars now. So we would have to explore and see if that's a possibility also.
We need to keep you safe, to protect us.
I can't point out what Chief Markorelli said, is that we've really had to change the way we do business on a lot of stuff. We're trying to limit our exposures to our officers to any situation as best we can. But unfortunately, we do still have to go into certain situations that we have now to avoid.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions. Louis Pacelli, any questions?
Yes, Vice Chair Lou Pacelli. First question, Director of all chiefs. Do you guys have a contingency plan? God forbid that your crew gets exhausted, someone's infected, and you have a quarantine area set up for any of your officers or firefighters?
I can, Chief Edward Lennon answering the question first. So the first part, yes, we are. We have the options of changing schedules. We have not gotten to that point yet. We've actually reviewed several different ways of me to do that. I've actually also engaged, it's rather helpful. I've also engaged our police union in discussions about it, because it is going to impact the collective bargaining agreement. They're receptive to working with me and working with the town on doing that. So we do have a plan in place as this progresses, yes. And you want to get to the second part, you want to get to the final?
Same thing. Chief Markorelli answering for fire. We have already a modified schedule. So recently, the fire department went to a 24-on, 72-off schedule. So the alternative to that would be going to 48-on and 48-off hours, that is. But we haven't gotten to that point yet. We also established a quarantine area at one of the schools, which will allow us, in the event that any of our personnel are exposed, we're going to provide them housing during quarantine period if they don't choose to go to their own house. It has bathroom and shower facilities, and meals would be provided. It seems to be what most departments are doing at this point. They'll either have an option of staying on a site or going home. We don't know how many people that's going to be. Based on what the pandemic predictions are, we could be down almost 40% of our respective departments at one time.
I actually have something else to add, that's before we move on. And Chief Edward Lennon also. We also have to think about the fact that we're also responsible for dispatch. We're also a 24/7 operation, and they work in close contact with each other. We've actually developed a plan both locally and nationally with our neighbors, neighboring towns, just to be aware of that. Because the likelihood of an exposure has been to isolate some of the police or firefighters is slightly easier than if it was a dispatcher. So that's where we're at.
I'm sorry.
So that's something we also have to take into account. We've set ourselves up with a plan, but they're a much smaller unit. So if, that's why we're, it could be devastating for them also. And lastly, I also forgot to talk about this when it comes to police officers. Probably beginning, starting tomorrow, we have a few technology things like we dealt with tonight, is we're also moving roll call from congregating five, six, seven, eight police officers in a room at one time to actually where they don't really make contact with each other. And we'll be doing remote roll call also, similar to what we're doing tonight. Hopefully, I answered most of your questions.
Okay, the last question. I'm going to stick my nose a little bit. I just got some feedback from one of our councilpeople. Attorney Michael Luzi, having some difficulty hearing, so if we can all just keep our voices.
Vice Chair Lou Pacelli, a question for me, Police Chief. The president and governor have stated, at this time, we are on so-called voluntary lockdowns to try to limit. If it comes to the point where we're put on a, like Italy was put on curfews, do you have enough personnel to enforce that with the threat of your guys getting infected? And how would you manage that? Would you get help from the state police? If you came sure, would you go on the state police? I mean, you've got other possibilities too. I mean, I'm hopeful that people will respect those guidelines that were put out by the state, but if it comes to that, is there a plan for that?
Chief Edward Lennon responding to the question. In regards to plan, the town does, we do have a pin, as part of our emergency response plan in regards to being able to respond to crises like this, which are pandemic. And sure, kind of going on a previous question asked by Councilman Walter to Chief Markorelli, is we're somewhat on our own in regards to being able to get any assistance from the state. You have to remember that the state police only have approximately 1,000 troopers. Do you think that they'll come to a point like they did in New York, where they'll have some national fire assistance? But the one thing I can say positively is that we do have a six-town regional compact with the towns of North Haven, us, Ranford, Guilford, North Bradford, and Madison. So we've actually sat down last week between all the police chiefs. We sat down amongst all the police chiefs and came up with a plan for twofold, is that we do have to deal with something like that, and also that we've actually potted ourselves off from our neighboring PDs, so that if another PD happens to go down, not only can we assist ourselves, we may have to assist them also. We found some guidance from the state attorney's office in New Haven on dealing with these issues. The only thing I'm positive I can say is so far, outside of any United States, the West Coast has already been hit by this pretty badly. They have not had widespread issues such as that. I was on a call today, I actually know the chief of Perkin-Los Angeles, and she kind of spoke about it today, is that surprisingly, that's one of the issues they have not faced. So I can't say yes or no, but I'm hopeful.
Thank you. We support you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Samantha Parlato, any questions?
Yes, Chairman Parlato. Chiefs, is there, and council, what is it? Sorry, sorry, guys. Is there any thought of getting any test kits for your staff? To make sure that they're reserved and know that that was short supply?
So that's a good question, and the answer right now is, we would love to. They weren't even testing in mass until recently. They were only up until a couple of days ago testing patients that were hospitalized and requiring advanced intervention. So now they're starting to do these mobile testing labs outside the hospitals. But right now, we're trying to get prioritized testing for public safety because if I have 14 people that are sidelined for 14 weeks, or 14 days, I'm going to have a problem staffing the fire department. So everybody else is going to have to work extended hours and so forth. So far, the State Department of Public Health has been tone deaf.
Robert Anthon, any questions?
No.
Henry Butler, any questions?
Councilman Walter, any questions?
I'm not allowed to turn here.
Raymond Pompano, any questions?
Yeah, Chief, you mentioned, Ray Pompano, you mentioned 75% reimbursement. How far does that go? Does that, like, would that include the overtime, the other things? What does that encompass on the language behind that 75%?
Chief Mark Riley answering Councilman Pompano.
Can we state that question, excuse me, can we state that question generally?
Councilman Pompano asked how much of the event would be reimbursable? So in answer to your question, under the Stafford Act, that's a federal law that allows when a presidential declaration is made, we can seek up to 75% reimbursement for allowable expenses. So the equipment that we're purchasing has to be allowable by the government, first of all. But regular wages typically would not be reimbursed, but overtime wages attributed to the event are reimbursable as long as the documentation is proper. For example, we made, another item that could be reimbursable, we have to decon a firehouse, decontam the firehouse. We would fill out a forced contractor form, which is a federal form, and we would get reimbursed with 75% of that expense.
Jennifer Ragera, any questions?
No questions.
Ever roll, a motion to accept.
Vice Chair Lou Pacelli.
Second.
Okay, can I state the motion? The motion is to accept the reallocation. Was there a question? Was that Councilman Laston?
Sorry, is the Councilman Laston, I probably, so, keep that, but I, I, I need the motion. To approve the provision of $150,000.
Okay. Okay, so Councilwoman Glassman made the motion to accept the reallocation of emergency appropriations of up to 150,000. Is that right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I have a second?
Second, Councilwoman Pacelli.
Okay. And a roll call, please, Roberta.
Ashley Wescott?
Yes.
Beth Capitorno?
Yes.
Kimberly Glassman?
Yes.
Joseph Deco?
Yes.
Joseph Santino?
Yes.
Josh Walter?
Yes.
Mary Ann Caesar?
Yes.
Louis Pacelli?
Yes.
Samantha Parlato?
Yes.
Robert Anthon?
Yes.
Henry Butler? Raymond Pompano?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragera?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you. Item number four.
Vice Chair Lou Pacelli, to consider an act upon a resolution pursuant to the authority granted by Governor Len Lamont's executive order 7C, to amend the Board of Finance Budget Workshop Subcommittee Meeting Schedule and the Town Council Budget Workshop slash Public Hearing slash Special Meeting Schedule for fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Attorney Luzzi, again, this is Chair Joe Deco, to speak on this item, please.
Attorney Michael Luzzi, and I'll speak briefly on it. Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7C allows municipalities to extend their budget deadlines, workshops, all budget-related items, 30 days to the last budget event. Ours is the 28th of April. At this point, I'm going to recommend that we do that. Obviously, we have some town buildings closed and I think it's obviously necessary based on what you've all heard this evening and what you're hearing every day. I also want to indicate that a final schedule will be circulated and posted. There's a number of moving parts. So I want the council and certainly anyone listening to understand that we've had a number of discussions among and between the mayor's staff regarding this. And in light of, you know, number of meeting rooms, Board of Education availability, staff, we're seeking input from the superintendent of schools and certainly also Senator Len Fazano and State Representative Joe Zulo have had a lot of input in this. In fact, I received a couple of text messages today as to whether or not we're going to put to use these provisions of Section 7C. So there might even be additional timelines that become available. So based on that, I am going to recommend to this council that we extend the deadlines. There is going to be an extensive motion made, so if you would just listen to it, please. The language in the motion will mirror what you just read with respect to item four. So I'll turn it over back to the chairman. If there's any questions with me, I'll entertain.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion, but just give me a second to read it. It is rather lengthy. I'm asking for a motion to resolve to extend the Budget Workshop Subcommittee Meeting Schedule and the Town Council Budget Workshop Subcommittee Meeting Schedule, the Council Budget Workshop slash Public Hearing slash Special Meeting Schedule for the fiscal year of 2020 to 2021 budget in accordance with the authority permitted by Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7C. May I have a motion?
Lou Pacelli, Vice Chair.
Vice Chair Lou Pacelli. Okay, we'll take Vice Chair Pacelli's motion and Councilman Santino's second. Roberta, if you can go through a discussion, please.
See if they have questions?
If there's any questions, I don't know.
Ashley Wescott, you have any questions?
No questions.
Beth Capitorno, any questions?
No questions.
Kimberly Glassman, any questions?
No questions.
Joseph Deco, any questions?
No.
Joseph Santino, any questions?
No.
Josh Walter, any questions?
Question for Attorney, Town Attorney. If we start running up against the end of our annual, current annual budget, what are going to be the steps that we may have to take at that point?
Yeah, I probably have said, I don't know, the last third day is one of the 27 years of practice. Obviously, we'll have to seek whatever direction we need. Jim, do you have anything you might be able to add to that? It's such a, it's such a situation of first impression and that, like I said, I did, as Attorney Michael Luzzi stated, I did get some text messages today from Hartford. Our representatives and senators are really in the mix with respect to what's going on. I know the mayor has had a tremendous amount of feedback from Senator Fazano, who's quite frankly in the room. The decisions have been made. I did get some texts today asking about some deadlines. So I do think that they are entertaining extending this. I have no, no first-hand knowledge. My doctor today has got some of the information I received today is that they're even thinking about extending this a bit longer. So they, I will say, unlike maybe some of the other areas, from the legislative standpoint, it appears that the governor is moving incrementally. And in doing so, I think, you know, makes issues in order. There's feedback about a particular order and they take that into consideration. And then is moving, as we were saying, fairly cautiously. I do think they're listening and hopefully we won't have that issue, but I believe we do, whatever steps we have to take.
It's Councilman Walter. Thank you. We have a little bit of time, so. Thank you. No further questions.
Mary Ann Caesar, any questions?
No questions.
Louis Pacelli, any questions?
No questions.
Samantha Parlato, any questions?
No questions.
Robert Anthon, any questions?
No.
Henry Butler, any questions?
No questions.
Raymond Pompano, any questions?
No.
Jennifer Ragera, any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Roberta. At this time, just before we vote on this, I just want to make it very clear that the final schedule will be circulated and posted, but we do have to make contacts with the certain departments in the Board of Ed so we can make sure that we're all on the same page. Roberta, may I have a roll call, please?
Ashley Wescott?
Yes.
Beth Capitorno?
Yes.
Kimberly Glassman?
Yes.
Joseph Deco?
Yes.
Joseph Santino?
Yes.
Josh Walter?
Yes.
Mary Ann Caesar?
Yes.
Louis Pacelli?
Yes.
Samantha Parlato?
Yes.
Robert Anthon?
Yes.
Henry Butler?
Yes.
Raymond Pompano?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragera?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried.
Thank you, Roberta. Just before, that concludes the agenda items. But before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I just want to thank everyone, the council, the public, those who called in on the phone, the chiefs, Jim Peely, for your patience and understanding. It's very appreciated. We're evaluating other means of communication, including live streaming and working out the bugs with that. We appreciate everybody's patience and cooperation at this time. So thank you very much. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second, Councilwoman Caesar.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstained. Thank you, adjourned.